Call the roll, please.
Ms. Franzen?
Here.
Mrs. Hoover?
Here.
Ms. Royce?
Here.
Ms. Bowling?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Gertin?
Here.
Mr. Braden?
Here.
We have all members present this evening. Moving on to amendments of the agenda. We have two. One is to remove the minutes from the June 24 meeting. The other is to remove ordinance M2. We have a revised version of that ordinance, and that will be reflected in M4. Ms. Royce?
I move we amend the agenda as stated.
Motion by Ms. Royce to amend the agenda as stated. Is there a second? Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen? Yes. Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to public hearings. We do have one this evening. Notice is hereby given that on the 8th day of July 2025 at 7:30 p.m., a public hearing will be held on the tax budget prepared by the Auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, for the next fiscal year ending December 31st, 2026. The hearing will be held at Norwood City Hall, located on the second floor of 4645 Montgomery Road, Norwood, Ohio, 45212. We'll go ahead and declare this public hearing open. If there is anyone to speak in favor of this matter, please step forward.
Good evening, Bishop Sunny James. I just want to, to the residents of Norwood, Ohio, I want to make sure that we learn to show appreciation for the work that goes into all of our financial matters. Want to commend the staff and those that put time into this. And I can confidently say to the residents of Norwood that I am 100% confident in the level of competency of the leadership that we have in this area, and that where there may be some uncertainties, I'm pleased to know that God has placed a man in position that is transparent and open and truly is a true Norwoodian. And so I just want to stand during this public hearing to commend the work that our department puts in. Mr. Miracle, I want to just personally publicly say thank you. Thank you for being sent by God to my city to do the work that you do for the people that I serve and the people that I love. And so the Bible says that we're to give honor to whom honor is due, sir. And so I want to publicly stand and honor you for the work, for you and the department, that you all are doing for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone else to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone to speak against this matter? Anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak against? Hearing all of those in favor and all of those against this matter, I will go ahead and declare this public hearing closed. Moving on to reports of standing, sorry, requests to address counsel. We do have two this evening. The first is Susan Daniels.
Hello, hello, hello. Susan Daniels, 2063 Maple Avenue, President of the Norwood Historical Society. So I'm just here to promote our school exhibit, which is next Wednesday at the Community Center at 6:30 for an hour and a half-ish. We are partnering with the Alumni Association. So they're going to bring a lot of their memorabilia of school stuff, and then we're going to bring ours out from the archive room. So we're going to put on an exhibit. Last year, we started tackling the exhibits to bring more out for people to come see what we have in our archive room. So it's just easier to bring it all down to the cafeteria of the Community Center and then have cake and ice cream, drinks, and just mingle with people. So again, it is at 6:30 at the Community Center next Wednesday. So kind of starting off the celebration for Norwood. And we'll have also the yearbooks, too. So we're going to have all the yearbooks out that you can browse through. I'm just going to go all the way up to the 80s. So people are more interested in yearbooks, too. And we're trying to get an old, real film from 1962 or 1963 that we were donated with of a football game. So we're going to try to get that work in to be played as well as some entertainment. So yeah, so if you guys have any questions, let me know. I didn't know how to advertise on the city's Facebook page, website, whatever. But I do have some flyers. I can email Noah, the JPEG, whatever. So I shall leave it there. And then we do have nine more events this year, which includes that. So just letting you know that we do have a year full of events that is all open to the public, mainly at the Community Center, now at the Rec Center, at Northwood Sidery. So just, we're trying to, multiple places. But again, lots of events, lots of things to do. I shall leave that here, too. Much.
Thank you. Thank you. And our next request to address counsel is Bishop Sunny James.
Good evening, again. I better take a couple of these because I'm supposed to be in, not supposed to be, I'll be in Columbus on Wednesday, but for that cake and ice cream, I'm going to have to try to make it back. I want to just take a moment and, you know, there's a lot going on around the country. Those poor families in Texas just really want to, you know, this is a rough time. And for me personally, you know, understanding how precious life can be, my heart just really goes out to all of them. And what it makes me think about is Norwood. You know, we've come a long way, guys. We've come an awful long way. And I'm, and I'm really proud of this community, of how we have pulled it together. We still have some issues, but what family does. But this Fourth of July was extremely difficult for me because, as many of you know, I'm forming a new organization focused on the youth crime and the gun violence. And to see young folks out on a day to celebrate firing firearms in, what, uh...
Fireworks.
Thank you. To see them shooting fireworks into folks' cars, and then even to be launching them at police officers to where I have to get out of my car and let them know over my dead body, are we going to create mayhem in our city? And then to run up on young folks, even in my own community, that seemingly are not happy with things. Now, I'm one that I'm willing to put my life on the line to make sure that this community continues to move forward. Because if any community needs to be celebrated, it's right here, folks. We've come through some real rough times, rough times even with each other. But we're making it through. But with all of the pressures, the mental health stresses on folks, I just want to plead with all of you as leaders and our residents, let's go the extra mile. It doesn't take a massive flood to bring us together, although when we've had floods, we've come together. But my concern is, as I'm rescheduling my next event for our Youth and Community Safety Summit, it was going to be July 19, but there's so much going on in the city that I really feel that me and my troops, our best energy is going to be spent on the grounds, in the street, really dealing with these young folks. And so I'm going to call together a citywide march, parade, celebration of every human being in our city to come together, not just Norwood, I mean Cincinnati at large, to come together to just show the world and show our youth that we really do care for one another. And I believe as we do this, and I'll be making the announcement at our next council meeting, but as I, I believe as we do this, we're going to really show people what it's like to come together and represent the neighborhood. And we're family, guys. Like with any family, things aren't always perfect. But if we look around us now, things, things are just getting a little too serious out there. And I want us as Norwoodians, I want us to be out on the front of this thing, showing the world, this is how you do it, baby, as the song says. And I'm believing that all of you will prioritize when you hear about it because we've got to get this thing together. 14- and 16-year-olds dying. So God bless you all, and I'm glad I was able to make it tonight.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to reports of standing committees of counsel. We have one, and that is Committee of the Whole meeting, dated July 1st, last week, 2025. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred, master plan for the city, new council orientation, community survey, distribution, and community survey early results and follow-up, beg lead to submit following report. With regard to the community survey early results and follow-up, over 800 surveys have been attempted at this point. Mr. Gertin looked at the list of individuals who stated they would like to be contacted by a member of council. That list was shared with council members via email. With regard to the community survey distribution, survey will remain open until at least August 31st, 2025. Flyers for churches will be mailed. Flyers for table tops, full page, and half-page for local businesses will be printed and available at the next council meeting. An email will be sent to the chamber businesses asking their employees to complete the survey and also their preference for the ability to post a flyer for their customers, either sent electronically, mailed, or dropped off. New council orientation. There were no additional updates on this matter. With regard to the master plan for the city, there was no further discussion on this matter as it is linked to the results of the community survey. All matters will remain in committee for further discussion and development. Minutes are attached. Respectfully submitted, Joseph Gears Chairperson, Ms. Royce, Mrs. Hoover, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Gertin. Ms. Royce?
May we accept the committee report?
Motion by Ms. Royce to accept the committee report. Mr. Gertin?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Gertin. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen? Yes. Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We have no third readings or second readings of ordinances or resolutions. So we will move on to introductory readings of resident, of residents, of ordinances and resolutions. And the first is an ordinance of the City of Norwood, Ohio, authorizing non-union employee pay rates. Mr. Gertin?
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mr. Gertin to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mr. Gertin?
Yeah, the reason I'm doing it, or I'm making the motion for an emergency clause, if you look on page six of our packet at the top, it, the ordinance does have an emergency clause in it. The caption does not. So Mrs. Zondek says that one of the reasons why we want to get this fast, as fast as possible is that we cannot hire somebody until this ordinance goes through.
Mrs. Hoover?
I had a couple of questions specifically about the administrative specialist. Could you? I'm worried something is going on I don't know about. I mean...
Which position?
The administrative specialist.
Administrative specialist for?
It says, "A position shall serve the dual role as acting for the Secretary of Clerk and part-time to the mayor." I'm wondering if we're, if we're losing Ms. Stein.
No, that has not changed. That's been in the ordinance since I started. That's not a change. I think there's a, some nuances with how we've hired. Angela's position had changed. So there's some carryover. We didn't get rid of some positions, but they're maybe not filled, where Angela and Sharon is a more filled position in this ordinance. I think it's just additional positioning.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I was worried she was leaving.
Yeah, no.
She's gone. I think that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mr. Gertin, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Norwood, Ohio, authorizing non-union employee pay rates. An ordinance of the City of Norwood, Ohio, authorizing non-union employee pay rates. And an ordinance of the City of Norwood, Ohio, authorizing non-union employee pay rates.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover?
I move we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to pass the ordinance. Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
No.
With six members voting for and one against, the motion carries. The next item is a resolution adopting the 2026 tax budget and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Franzen?
I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Mr. Gertin?
Second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gertin. Any discussion? Mrs. Franzen?
Yeah, so we had a lovely finance meeting for this meeting, and Mr. Miracle, Ms. Jaeger, and everyone in the Auditor and Treasury Office has been working really hard on this, and we've been very happy to be part of the process. It's a, you know, the number one, number two most important document in the city. So I'm excited that we were able to kind of understand it a lot more, and we'll get it passed tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, and I think just to build on that, you know, even though the circumstances here that all three readings are necessary for the July 15 deadline, I think going back to maybe as early as the beginning of March, Mr. Miracle and Mrs. Jaeger have been working on this, I would say enrolling the Finance Committee to sort of what's happening, the process, so on and so forth. And I think that minus some, let's say, maybe clerical errors in terms of getting the public hearing organized, that this, you know, really would have been on the last council meeting. And so therefore, I think, like, kind of on their part for the Auditor's Office, they've, they've done everything they can to get this to us in a timely manner and otherwise would have been here sooner. So even though I don't love the three readings, I think in this particular case, I am comfortable with it, given the nature of how they've gotten on with their business the last three months.
Thank you.
As another member of the Finance Committee, I'll just echo what has just been said. They've been very thorough and transparent through this whole process, making sure that the committee has been available to look at the process of not just the document, but the process of making the document. So I feel very confident in the work of the Auditor's Office, and I'm happy to vote yes under the circumstances.
Thank you. Further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mr. Gertin, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the resolution.
Resolution adopting 2026 tax budget and declaring an emergency. Resolution adopting 2026 tax budget and declaring an emergency. Resolution adopting 2026 tax budget and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling?
I move that we pass the resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to pass the resolution. Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item. This is an ordinance amending designated locations within the City of Norwood for the posting of ordinances, resolutions, statements, orders, proclamations, notices, and reports required by law. Mrs. Franzen?
I move we have the first reading of this ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to have the first reading of the resolution. I'm sorry, of the ordinance. Mrs. Bowling?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover?
I'm wondering, is this, I'm assuming, a change that there was more than these three locations? City Hall, the website, and Facebook? Was there, are there different places that have been removed?
Initially, we were, Mr. Moore, correct me if I'm wrong, this is updating our posting status so that we are not, sorry, we are not advertising these all in the Inquirer.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's, it's a part of that process, but it, you know, looking at what's required currently under our code is we have to, for every ordinance is passed, it's got to be posted in City Hall, in the library, in the Community Center, and five places. There were a lot of places, which is just, there's no point. It's, it's a holdover from when, well, it's kind of like the advertising in a newspaper of general circulation requirement after an ordinance has been passed. So people are put on notice. That's not how people got, get noticed. People don't go to the library to see what council passed last week. You know what I mean? They don't go to the Community Center to see what council passed last week. Now they go online. And so that's, it, it eliminates a lot of those, which I don't know anybody that was at the Community Center or at the library or downstairs in City Hall and said, "Oh, they changed how close I can park to a driveway. I better keep that in mind." So it's, that's, it's updating this to the way the world really works.
Any further discussion? Mr. Moore?
May I ask, I, I saw the, let's say, the original council packet version of this that would have been N2, and then this is, the amended version is M4. So I think I'm clear on sort of the overall purpose of what we're trying to hear. What was different from, from N2 to M4? I don't have them side by side. Mr. Moore?
Substantively, there was no difference. It was just some wording. Tim had sent me a copy, CAT is out, by the way, so everything's a little slower at my office, but he sent me a copy of, sent me his draft, and I sent some comments back, but it was, when I saw it and sent it back was after it had to be submitted to the clerk, so there were some, some corrections, and there were some typo kinds of things. It's like, yeah, this, this sentence doesn't make a lot of sense. Let's rephrase it.
Thank you.
Mr. Braden?
Mr. President, so just clarifying, you haven't added, you haven't added anything. You took away some places that we were posting.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mrs. Bowling, is to have the first reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance amending designated locations within the City of Norwood for the posting of ordinances, resolutions, statements, orders, proclamations, notices, and reports required by law.
Thank you. Moving on to administration reports. Mayor Snyder is not here this evening, but Mr. Powers, I understand, he would like to give a report in his absence.
Thank you. Just one item briefly. Want to make sure everybody is aware that we have the groundbreaking for the Elm Avenue flood elimination project this Friday at 10 a.m. That'll be located at 1912 Maple Avenue. You'll know you're at 1912 Maple Avenue when you don't see a house on the lot. So it is, it is a vacant lot. That is where the storm sewer is going to go through to the future detention area. So we will all be there. We'll be there celebrating with the engineers, contractors, project developers, and hopefully as many of you as are able to make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Braden?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick response to Mr. Powers. I just want to give my full support for what's going on there. I'm, I'm having a two-pole Friday, so I won't be able to attend there. I just want to give my support and let the citizens know what a good work that they're doing, and I appreciate the invite.
And I appreciate the invite. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miracle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to thank council for passing the tax budget this evening. Also wanted to say to the Finance Committee, also to Mr. Schwartz, of course, Mary Jaeger, a lot of effort in this over the past three months. And our intention out of my office is that this is the procedure that you're going to see a lot more of, to have the Finance Committee involved in what we're working on. Also, to that end, spoke about it in the Finance Committee earlier. I think it may have been a couple of meetings ago. I think Mrs. Hoover had asked a question about the report on accounting methods. And it kind of got me thinking, we do have that in an Excel spreadsheet, but that's kind of stagnant. So Mary and I reviewed, it's called monday.com last week, and it is a project management tool. And what we'd like to do is put the report on accounting methods on to this project management tool. There will be folks that have access to it to make updates. And then council as a whole will have the ability to view this at any time. It's kind of nice. It was an hour-long tutorial. I'm sure I didn't catch all of it, but I think when things get updated, you will get an email that a date has been updated or a project, part of that has been completed. So we're just trying to increase the transparency of the Auditor's Office. And then my goal is that one day you won't have to ask any questions. You'll have all the information available for you. So keep you posted on that. That is something I'd like to have happen sooner rather than later. Also, this Thursday, we have Anna Mary Thomas and the Auditor of State will be here for an audit. So Mary gets to visit with Anna Mary all day Thursday. I think they're, like I said, I think they're bringing two. So she'll be talking to most of the people in City Hall. Additionally, we've been talking about the P Card update. The manual is out for review with the department heads. So we're going to be soliciting an update from them. Hopefully that's something that we bring to council in August. And let's see, let me see, what else we got going on? Oh, we're going to be doing some SSI training. I think it's beginning August the 1st. We'll have unlimited access to, I think Mr. Gerton called it, was it Sandbox? At Mosty, we call it Playtime. You can go in and look at it without doing any harm and kind of get yourself acclimated to it. So I think that's all I had to share with council this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miracle? All right, Mr. Moore.
I have no report unless somebody's got questions.
Questions for Mr. Moore. All right.
Mrs. Hoover. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to first be acknowledged that we fixed the unfinished. Anyone notice that?
I fixed it at the last meeting.
Oh, you did?
You did.
Oh, thank you. I thought I did. Give you full credit. I want to appreciate Mr. Gears giving all the table QR codes together when I was at the Off Pike Market this weekend. I, it wasn't an assault. I very friendly approached people and requested firmly that they fill it out. Got at least 10 more, so there's, it's moving. It's happening. I just got an update of the church list, so that should be able to go out this week, maybe before Sunday, but question mark. So I know we've shared our goals about 2,000, so keep pushing. Keep sharing with your friends, nag people, put it in front of them, ask them to do it. That's it about that. Thank you. Just wanted to share the cooling centers again. It's going to be another hot one coming up. The Norwood Public Library has, is considered a cooling center in Norwood as well as either way up Montgomery Road and down Montgomery Road in Evanston and Pleasant Ridge, they're rec. centers. If you remember, Cincinnati Focus will be looking at opening their cooling center here in Norwood later this summer, so that hopefully will be coming. But again, check on your neighbors, stay hydrated, keep your pets inside. Sorry, me again. Recycling and compost, this is another one. We really need a lot more feedback on it. I'm working with Carolyn from the Board of Health and we have become a partner with Hamilton County Resource, so we're getting extra funding to help support and encourage recycling. So the first thing is we need to get more information from residents so we can figure out where do we need to target? Where are the interests that people have? I'm really excited to be exploring community composting here in Norwood, which it happened, they have it in coal rain. It diverts over a ton a month. Same thing in the City of Wyoming. So those things are happening in other communities. And I would love for there to be enough interest for us to do that here. And that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yeah, I want to go ahead and try to schedule an infrastructure committee meeting either next week or the week after. There's no real rush. Just wanted to kind of update people on stuff going on in the streets and the parks of the city. So if folks have time, let's see, Thursday the 17th or possibly like, like Wednesday or Thursday, does that work for infrastructure folks?
I could do Wednesday, I could not do Thursday.
Okay. Wednesday the 16th. I don't know, this is historical society. Maybe like 5:45, 6 o'clock, is that too early?
I think I'm working in the evening both of those days.
Yeah, if next week doesn't work, we can head into the week after that, like the 23rd or 24th.
I am available.
Okay.
Those days. The 24th I might be, that's a weird weekend.
Is it the break?
Previous week. I'm trying to avoid that.
Could we do a Monday?
Yeah.
Mondays I have, I'm free most of the day.
Okay. Monday like.
I could do the 14th or the 21st if you all have.
I could do the 14th, I could do the 21st. 14th, well, how early?
I've got plenty of time.
John? Stephanie?
14th seems okay.
Okay. I will plan on scheduling one on the 14th. We have another thing, but at 5:00 maybe, 5:00 on the 14th.
We can do whatever.
Okay. All right. Thank you for tolerating that logistical fun.
Any other unfinished business? All right, any new business? No new business? Mrs. Hoover.
This is a good one. This is money. This is money, friends. So if you've been watching the news, you'll know that the state has decided to take the unclaimed funds to use for stadium. So take a look and see if you are owed any money. I have like $20 out there from an old humanic claim, but my kiddo, one of my kiddos, has over $200 that we just found from Wendy Wilton Kroger. So check it out. Look for your name, look for your friends, look for your family, because pretty soon that money will be gone towards the stadium. And then the next thing, I just took some really great pictures of the Off Pike Market. Ms. Daniels was there with her stuff. These are just the folks that I happened to spend some time with. I really want to thank Officer Spilly and Thomas for coming. They were there, I think, all day. Really lovely, social, friendly. It was really great to have them there. And then we have Paul and Maisie Wellington. They are starting a toy museum in Norwood. And if folks know Greens Floral Shop, Greens has moved to Montgomery Road, right, right sort of next door where Ventura has made this beautiful storefront. I saw this sign was open when I drove by. So the toy museum will be in what was Greens. And I just think it's fantastic we're having this new business come to Norwood. So as they develop, check it out. And then finally, Paul Boys was there from Emily's Garden. This is one of the, like, I can't talk enough about Emily's Garden. It was created in memory of a Norwood woman who died young of brain cancer. And this garden is a memorial to her. It is an absolutely beautiful, magical space. And what he has there is all items from the garden. And he has, there's a basket there of garlic. And it's from a woman who lives on the street, who her family brought that garlic up from Jericho, Tennessee, and was in her basement. Or no, maybe she planted it and had never harvested it. And then she dug it up and gave it to Paul, and now this is their first harvest. So, I mean, to me, that's just like this beautiful story about how interconnected we all are and we're all coming from somewhere and we all have something to give. So he also had some really amazing chocolate mint that they use in brownies. Anyway, check out the garden. It's absolutely amazing. And the next Off Pike Market will be Saturday, the 2nd. Lots of Norwood businesses are there. It's always a fun time. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Bowling.
I just want to remind everybody, there was a post in Norwood Strong, but I wanted to share. The Norwood Barracudas are hosting the Swim Champs July 14th and 15th. There are a ton of volunteer slots still available to fill, especially in parking. I don't like to park, so I'm working the concession stand. But I think that you should sign up. I am not affiliated with the Barracudas. I don't have a kid who swims on the Barracudas. It's a very cool event. They said 5,000 to 10,000 people coming to Norwood. So let's be good hosts and show them a good time. So if you've got time Monday or Tuesday, especially during the day, if you work insane weird hours like I do, take some time out during the day and go help some folks park.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Yeah, just wanted to say thank you to everybody who played a role in the Norwood 4th of July fireworks. Seeing it through my kid's eyes this year and just his eyes ready to pop out of his head. He was so excited and the fireworks were so close and loud and everything. It was a really special event. So just want to thank everyone who's involved with that. Mr. Braden, I want to say thank you for the Rocketman basketball hoop to shoot at. Wonder how many LBs you lost in hydration over the course of the day, sir? You were putting in work.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, just a great, you know, great hometown event. And it was especially meaningful because we had sort of a young mom friend who lives in Evanston who decided to come up and come to it. And she was just very like, wow, like, you know, just kind of like taken aback in sort of the best way and, you know, very praiseful of Norwood. So thank you for everyone for that great event.
Any other new business? Mrs. Hoover.
Sorry, I just thought of something. Sort of in response to a comment made by a gentleman earlier about gun violence. I did have a really great, long conversation with Chief Sumner this week and one which were folks that there is not an increase in youth violence in Norwood. I asked him very directly, that is not something that is happening here. I'm very happy for that and very glad to that. That is certainly something that our surrounding municipalities are dealing with, but I want residents to know that that is not an issue here in Norwood. I also just want to point people in the direction of Found Village. It's a phenomenal program that works with kids to get them off the street with mentors and coaching and job skill training. It's a phenomenal wraparound program. The Norwood Police have donated to them in the past. So there are some really fantastic organizations that are really working for the youth violence. One of the things that Chief Sumner did say is an ongoing issue is people leaving their firearms in their vehicles and them being stolen. And I also, Charmaine McGuffey has shared that thieves are breaking into cars and not going for technology, not going for cash, but going for guns. And I saw, it might have been on Norwood Strong, that someone said, you know, oh, their car was broken into and a gun was stolen. Please don't leave your firearm in your vehicle. That is no longer a safe option. So just want to share that. Our police department does give out free gun locks, free gun locks. So please make sure if you have a firearm that it's properly stored and away from people and children who shouldn't have access. Thank you.
Any other new business? I will note that Friday, July the 18th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. is the 132nd Norwood Day Parade. And the route is different this year. It will start on Floral Avenue at the, is it New City Presbyterian Church? We'll go down Floral, turn left on the Smith, take Smith all the way to Wall Street. It will end on Wall Street. So just a reminder, again, the parade begins at 7:00 p.m. on Friday, July the 18th. Mr. Gerton.
For the good of the order, we have a meeting next two weeks?
We are not. In council's rules, we have council's one vacation day. That is the 4th Tuesday in July. That was actually, well, those rules were adopted in January prior to the date change for the parade. If there is any emergency business that will need to take place, we will call a special meeting once, you know, if we have any appropriations, ordinances, or whatever comes forward that requires council's immediate attention prior to the first meeting in August. We will give council kind of that heads up, get a head count to see whether or not multiple meetings have to be scheduled due to not having five members, a minimum of six members present. Yeah, that was the long answer. Short answer was no, we do not have a meeting. Any other new business? All right. And we have zero communications. We have no absent members. Mr. Braden.